It's open to today's meeting at six oh two. First item on our agenda are the minutes of September second. I wasn't present for this meeting, but I'll still vote on it. Given that we only have a. Corn.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September second.
Second motion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is approval of a special use permit on Lake Wickabog for Eagle Hill School to use the beach and parking lot for their fall regatta on Saturday, October twenty fifth from nine AM to three PM. They do this every year.
They do quite a few.
Yeah.
Other than notifying the harbor masters or any other requirements that they need to meet as far as either parking or?
No, they apply for and if they need to leave the state, no, you know, they do, but. There usually is anything else that they need to do. The beach is technically closed. There's no lifeguards on beauty right now, so.
Then they they talk to the rescue squad, make sure?
Yeah.
I'll accept a motion for the permit.
I'll make a motion for a special use permit to approve for October twenty fifth, the Eagle Hill School rowing team to use Lake Wickabog Town parking lot and beach.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Next item on the agenda is the transfer of twenty seven Welcome Road from the town to Conservation. Vote is expected. So what's this about?
It's swapping of parcel. So they needed to acquire. I think it was forty B. There's a specific one up from five forty three. And they which Conservation owns, so they're swapping it for forty twenty seven Welcome Road. Giving that to Conservation.
This is for the Rude Man Project.
The Rude Man Project, yeah.
Which which phase?
It's part two still.
Space two, part two.
So I had the white G B guidance and she gave me this specific motion wording on that one. And I put them there. The Conservation already has discussed and they were happy with it. It's hard to find a parcel that they didn't already own or or didn't have, you know, connecting issues to something, so.
Yep.
Is it just a matter of approving that?
So you transfer, we the select risk transfer the care custody and control over that specific parcel to the Conservation Commission?
And the town already owns it?
It is.
Or will, once we get it?
No, it's not our, well, it goes to Conservation. So it's under like the town sort of bottoms that one now. It's part of five forty three. So I think it's sixteen forty three.
It's a town owned property that you're transferring over to Conservation Commission? Conservation Commission. Okay.
Do we have a like a motion?
A motion is in.
Motion, yeah.
Or the opposite. Because we need something from them, right?
We have, we have, they said they accepted it there. If Heather's happy with that, if not, then I'll have them go to Conservation next meeting and have them change the motion if she needs it. I did gave her the wording on it, what she needed to use. I sent it to Heather today, so.
Because twenty six already owned, this is twenty seven.
Yeah, so we had to really pick around to define one. They didn't already have. There's been a lot of back and forth, you know, so I tried to capture.
Yep. Okay, so we motion for that.
Yep, like the whole, yeah, the specific one. Yep, so we just say that.
Yep. Okay, so I'll make a motion to to transfer the care custody and control of twenty seven Welcome Road, Westbrookfield to the Conservation Commission.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Next item on our agenda is the gas pumping rates increase. Discussion vote expected.
So I spoke to Mike and Troy, kind of went through what generally the rates have been from the town, what other towns are currently giving to the residents and just trying to phrase it, you know, right and correct for them. So we have the old one, which is in the yellow. And they went the front G and they were happy with with the top sheet, so. And the back was Warren, which he wanted to kind of go near Warren's rates.
That's what this sheet is?
Yeah, that's that's what Warren's rate is. So Mike was pretty happy with following their structure. Hasn't gone tons, but significant enough in the last time it was, it was in twenty twelve.
Yeah, it's been a while.
So he worked alongside like thirty to forty, you know, thirty to forty, so it's not a massive jump, but.
And the inspector gets percentage of that is how he's paid?
Well, they have their stipend.
Yep.
Through the year, so.
So they just get strictly the stipend?
They just get the stipend.
Okay. So it doesn't matter to him, other than keeping comparable? Okay, he's not getting any additional?
Choice, they work quite low.
Yeah.
So you want to bring them up.
I don't see any issue with that. They're pretty reasonable still.
They are reasonable and Troy thought that he could go higher than that.
Thirteen years later.
So we can, you know, address that again if we really want to, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the increased gas and plumbing fees as presented unless you want me to read them all. Repeat scheduled, dated September sixteen.
I don't think there's any more to read. I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the SRF loan application authorization to file and certify authority to file.
So about a month or so ago, you had authorized Kathleen Landry, administrative assistant to the water department, to file on behalf of the town to USDA. This time it's the SRF filing, so there were two different programs that they were going to apply for. And SRF is the one that, you know, there's some differences there. It's a twenty year versus a forty year. They don't per se have grants, but they do have programs that, you know, will reduce the amount under loan forgiveness. So basically, they're trying to weigh things out to see what the best direction would be to go in. So this would provide Kathy with the authorization to be able to file on behalf of the town and also to file for the applications and execute agreements regarding the loan.
Just as a way of backstory information for anybody that's going to maybe watch it or the video. This is for the Leland Road.
The Leland Road project, correct.
This is to try to secure funds for that project.
Yes. So it looks like the first sheet in your binder is the certifying authority. So I would sign that if in fact you authorize the second page, which is the authority to file. The due date for submission, I believe, is October third, so it's approaching. They've been working really hard with RCAP Solutions and with TATA and Howard Engineering to get everything gathered as well as town council.
This is for a grant or for a loan?
This is for the loan. But also consideration for the loan forgiveness, which is kind of like a grant on their end, but it's not a grant grant, right? For a grant and or loans.
Do we have any idea of the dollar amount of this yet?
For the project?
Well, and which money are we going to be applying for these?
So, yeah, you're looking at, what was it, six point two, I believe, was what was voted on town floor. That's the probable cost estimate. And then, of course, there's the interest and all of that. So I can't tell you what that dollar amount's going to look like until they review the application. What I can tell you is that SRF really doesn't provide a full lot upfront. It's after they receive the application and review it, and then they'll give you details. So that'll be the point that we know whether or not they'll give us any loan forgiveness, where we'll understand what the interest rate would be, that type of thing. In the meantime, I was able to connect with James Starburg from RCAP Solutions and he has had a lot of experience with SRF funding and works with them frequently. So we have a meeting with the Chair of the Water Commission and Kathy, myself, with James to see if he could give us any any details as of late. You know, what's the typical interest rate at this point in time, just so we can kind of crunch some numbers and see what that might look like early, but so that meeting is this Thursday. The other thing I can tell you with certainty is that we looked or they looked at potentially using both agencies to see if maybe there is a way to be able to utilize both, and that would not work to the town's advantage, so. That has been ruled out.
Okay.
So is this a two-part process? This is really to get the application in?
To get the application in, so they require this when you file so that they know there's contact person, there's, you know, someone that's going to be accountable in representing the town. But yes, this will, there'll be many steps to follow. Once we hear back from them, we've already heard back from USDA.
Yep.
And so there's a lot to weigh out between the two. So like this program would be a twenty year. Well, what does that mean? That means that six point two plus the interest is going to be a much higher rate.
Right, absolutely.
USDA is a forty year. Now, both both tend to not include the construction time. So when it's a forty year, it's really a thirty seven year because the anticipated construction is three years.
Yep.
So there's there's going to be a lot of things that we're going to have to look at. But in the meantime, there's metrics that are used by both agencies. So you put your application in and then they apply the metrics. And part of that is looking at the number of users. What's the current rate to each user? Now, what would this loan look like in user fees?
Yep.
And what is that increase? Is it over burdensome to the users? And if so, then they may condition the loan
Yep.
with a certain percentage to taxpayers
Yep.
and certain percentage to the users. And I I did send Phil a really detailed email just spelling out what the process would be and why we would need to go for debt exclusion if in the event that were the case, and that's a very heavy lift.
Yeah.
And why? But regardless, even if it came back that it was, you know, it was feasible and it wouldn't be on the taxpayers at all, we'll still need to go to special town or or a town meeting, one or the other. Yeah. Because we're going to have to accept the terms of the loan and all of that, and it's a large amount of money.
And that's really what I was trying to get to with that is, so if we're authorizing Kathy to sign for the application and to get the ball rolling, we're not actually signing where she's going to sign the piece of paper, save the loan, and we're done.
Can't do it that way, absolutely not.
Steps is what I'm trying to get to.
Absolutely not. And, you know, your town council would recommend the same.
Yep.
Your bond council is definitely going to.
Yep.
And the agencies, either one of them, would require that. That will be a condition. There's no doubt about it, so.
Alright, so that's.
We're safe that way.
Well, and and I'm looking at it more of if there's multiple steps and checks of we know rather than we don't have any information and somebody signed it and this is what we're having to deal with.
Yeah, no, no. And throughout this process, we'll continue to talk about it and have that dialogue between the the commission and and if if that's through me, that's fine, but you will be up to speed every step of the way.
Then then I don't have any concern with to submit the application again as long as it's not the last say of the loan app agreement that is being signed for town at the moment. Without any more information.
You want to make the motion?
Yep, let's see, do we need a specific piece of it? So I'll make a motion to sign to certifying the authority to file. Or is that we need that one?
No, no, so it would be the second one and basically a motion to authorize Kathleen Landry, administrative assistant to the water department on behalf of the on behalf of the applicant to file applications and execute agreements for the grant. So if you looked at number one, you could use that.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. The Westbrookfield Water Department Administrative Assistant Kathleen Landry is hereby authorized on behalf of town of Westbrookfield to file applications and execute agreements for grant and or loan assistance as well as furnishing information, data and documents for the application.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. Next item on our agenda is the treasury and warrants.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal twenty six AP warrant number six and fiscal twenty six payroll warrant number six as presented.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the town administration.
So the Green Communities, we're in the process of closing that out. The projects are completed. And by this Friday, the final report should be completed through CMRPC and then submitted to DOER, so we'll be good there. Then following that, we will look at what our eligibility will be for the next competitive grant funding. And as discussed before, we may want to see if we can include that HVAC system that's up in the attic because that one is in failure, needs to be replaced and will cost about a hundred thousand. So if that's something that would be covered, that'd probably be a good use. The last I knew competitive grants were up to two hundred and fifty thousand. I know that the police department, the chief has indicated that they may need a cruiser next year. And our funds are pretty low, so thought was perhaps a hybrid or something could be, we could apply through Green Communities for that as well as a charging station. And that would probably bring us to the the limit of the application, but it's something that we could consider going forward for that. And and the chief is open to electric vehicles, so. Town hall restoration project, the contractor is scheduled to finish the priming and painting this week. He is supposed to provide a full schedule shortly, and that'll include the doors and and the other work associated with the exterior. The architect had received the door submittals from the contractor. Sounds like he would rather come out while the contractor is here, go over those submittals for the doors and approve them.
Is she being more responsive?
Yes. Yes, there's been a little lag, but not not as bad. So that's good. We will still need the roof investigation and structural engineer to assess the structural integrity as that far wall is Boeing due to the water damage, which is no doubt due to the roof, so. We'll have to look at that. I have no numbers for you there to to provide you with yet. The library exterior, a couple of years ago, town meeting approved twenty five thousand dollars for a soft wash of the back exterior wall and repointing. We had a contractor that was responsive, came out, took a look. And to do that and the repointing would actually be more along the lines of fifty five to sixty five thousand. The Chair of the Library Trustees, Jeff Robbins, is aware and they were going to discuss it at their next meeting, which I think is this? Yeah. Because they they believe that they have money in their reserves that they could put towards getting that done. What we found out was as the contractor looked around the building that the majority of the walls are in need of repointing. And based on the square footage, we're looking at about seven hundred thousand dollars to do that. But if you don't do that,
Yep.
then that's a problem. The solar pilots, Harold Scheid from RRG is reviewing all the data that was compiled back when Mr. Bishop and Ron were working on the pilot agreement. So he's reviewing that and he is going to be reaching out to Pure Sky to have them fill out RRG's four-page questionnaire, get that data. He'll start crunching the numbers on those. In the meantime, we'll have town council review the draft. But it sounds like RRG would like to be more involved in the process and just to really give us the best number that we can. Also, the decommissioning, a check is needed from Pure Sky Energy before they can apply for a building permit. So they are going to be cutting that check shortly and getting that over to us. And I believe that's in the amount of like three hundred and sixty seven. Off the top of my head, I think that's the the number, so. So that'll be moving forward with the Leland Road Water Project. We did hear back from USDA and it looks like there's two options. There were some negative impacts to to the application and the factors, I should say, that that impacted the grant percentages. And those are that there's really no associated debt because the town's always paid cash.
I know.
So so there's not like that history, which is really helpful. And if you had debt, that means your grant funding would be higher. So there's no associated system debt. Overall project costs and commercial business users, which according to their program, help to reduce residential costs associated with the project debt. And so because there is none, it's a lower amount. The two scenarios, if we were to go forward now, we'd be looking at six million, six hundred and four thousand dollar loan over a thirty seven year period at a three point one two five interest rate. That annual payment would be about three hundred and three thousand dollars per year. The loan fundings available for the town project can be committed as soon as October. This would allow the town to move forward with its bidding for the project. That's one scenario. The second scenario is to wait a bit and apply for grant funding. And that we'd be looking at just under a million in grant funding. So the loan would be against five five million, six hundred and sixteen thousand. So that annual payment at the same interest rate would be about two hundred and fifty eight thousand and change. But that this scenario hinges on the successful exclusion. So one of the big problems when it came to applying the metrics that I spoke about was that you have a commercial user and it's the concrete business. And they're they're like thirty percent of the overall usage.
Really, really?
Yeah, yeah. And so that being that it's thirty percent and it's commercial, not residential, that it's a tough sell. So Joe from USDA, he's the director, regional director, and he pitched it to DC and they have an issue with with the idea of a thirty percent commercial. So he is pitching it with the idea that, yeah, it's commercial. And they could go at any time. You know, they could. They were just bought out, come to find out, I think it was Phil that informed Joe that they they had been bought out from an out of state company, you know, not too long ago. So there's always that possibility. And if that were to happen, what would that do? Right, so you know, there's that, that's got to be weighed out. There's, you know, so that's where we are there.
So it's not helping that we're a small rural town with a very small population and one business.
We have more than one business, one business using all the water.
Using, but again, it's thirty percent of a smaller number. It's not like we're a large city and the business is using thirty percent of a large number. It's not helping us?
No, the metrics are the metrics, but he's trying, so there's there's, yeah. Elementary school, I had told you that I had a meeting with them. They applied for the MSBA funding. The town could be looking at about one point five to two million.
And which project was this for?
This is for the doors and the windows. And it's a much needed project. I found out that in order to open some of those doors before school starts, they're they're having to use brute force.
Yep.
Not acceptable. So there's that.
And that was, how much did you say?
One point five.
One point five to two million. And again, that's just a rough estimate at this point.
That would be the entire project and then that MSBA would pay a portion, but we have to approve.
No, that would.
That's our portion.
That's our portion for doors and windows.
Very nice doors.
All the doors.
It's a lot of doors and windows, isn't it?
It's a lot. One of the schools. We still have the middle high school to worry about. That we have to pay whatever comes up there at forty percent or so, which I know roofs are.
Yes.
And so is the roof here, so. Yeah, which the MSBA has nothing to do with roofs usually.
Yeah.
But that's another big ticket item.
It sure is.
That's why I mentioned to the Capitol Committee two years ago, like you need to contact a school and see what's coming down the pipeline.
So they could. Going forward. Going forward, um the school uh will be more they will be participating more in, you know, being present for advisory meetings and such. We'll be receiving regular updates from the school, where they're at, and vice versa. So this will be a good exchange. And they've also, we talked about the financial state that the town is in and it's uh basically our budget's just not sustainable. And uh they're they're willing to to support uh us if we need to go forward with a proposition two and a half override. And well.
But there's a lot, a lot of items going on because you're talking about debt, you're talking about debt exclusions. We're talking about a water for the entire town and the school. And then the operating budget.
And then a prop two and a half override.
And then the operating budget, just to keep things going, right?
And so and when you weigh it out, you know, there so there's a lot, there's an awful lot to deal with in a very short amount of time. And if a either or, a debt exclusion would be really a tough sell. But if you had to do that and on top of it, you're going for an override, it's just not gonna, that's just an impossible. So that brings us to the budget for fiscal twenty twenty-seven. And uh we've been having the discussions. And at this point in time, if you look back, Donna's done a great job at just doing a cursory review and identifying the the trend of spending. And uh fiscal twenty-five, at the end of the year, closing out the books, looking at the expense, um we used well over ninety percent, I wanna say it was the high nineties, of the budget. So she went back several years and each year that has increased, right?
We're getting tighter.
We're getting better with our budgeting.
Yeah.
It's going to hurt our free cash.
It's, yeah, but it'll be a big impact to free cash.
Yep.
So.
So what's available for free cash?
Then when you look at that and you understand that this using free cash each year just not is not a sustainable option, it's it's really unfortunate. We won't have it to be able to use. So even if we were to recommend to the departments to level fund for next fiscal year, we're still going to be over the levy limit. We won't be under the levy limit because we won't have that four hundred thousand to supplement. And then there's the uncontrollable uh line items that we have absolutely no control over. So so what do we do? When you look at the division of local services and and what they would recommend, you know, one would be a zero-two budget process, right? But when you look at that, this town's already been doing that. A zero-two is basically that the finance committee, or in this case advisory committee, is looking at every single line item with within every single budget and calling each line item to task. And they've been doing that. You've been doing that, so that's not even an option because we're already there, right?
Yeah, they're doing that for years.
So it's, this is going to be um a very, very tricky uh navigation. So I think without a really, you know, deep dive right at this point, I think it's going to be a a multi, you know, plan. So there would have to be preparation for an override and presentation and be prepared with the worst-case scenario budget. And that would uh require some significant cuts to significant departments. Because there's just, we don't have the financial resources as it is. So this'll.
How soon, how soon before Donna knows and gets information back from the Department of Revenue about what the?
Well, I know that, uh, I think she she will have a really good idea, like really soon. I do know that they are, they're actually ahead of schedule. The uh David from RRG already went in for the recap and he he already populated the pages that Donna needed. So she was able to go in. She's going to work with the town clerk because this'll be um Clarissa's first time. So she's gonna walk her through that and uh they can submit, so that'll be great. So we should know pretty soon. But even if we get a substantial amount, let's say, we're still gonna have to make some serious cuts because we can't, we can't afford to spend that much. We left ourselves with what, sixteen thousand or nineteen thousand?
There's no room.
Yeah.
No.
So just to, you know, and we're probably going to echo this every single meeting and the more information I get. And then the financial team, we will be coming forward to meet with you and advisory and and really lay it out um as to what our options look like and what we'll need to do. So we wanna get get this going as soon as possible because, you know, pretty soon we'd be entering into the budget process anyway. And we wanna be able to have the discussions with the department heads and get everybody prepared, um, you know, but we wanna have all our ducks in a row, all the financials, so everybody, everybody is aware.
So when is phase three of?
Okay, well, I I was going to get get to that. So we met with Jim and Ann Highway today and that was with um our treasurer collector and town accountant to go over the phase three. So the cost for phase three is um for design, total estimate for final design and construction uh that the town is obligated to pay will be one point one million.
And this is next fiscal year?
This is from starting fiscal twenty-seven through fiscal thirty. So in fiscal twenty-seven, we'd be looking at about five hundred thousand. Fiscal twenty-eight, two hundred and eighty thousand. Fiscal twenty-nine, two hundred thousand, and fiscal thirty, one twenty. In that meeting, uh CHA engineer John Morgan uh called in and we talked about that. And Jim asked him if there was any any way to reduce fiscal twenty-seven's dollar amount based on the items that need to be done. And he thought he could bring it down maybe to four hundred thousand. And then it would be a matter of applying, taking that hundred thousand and applying it to the following fiscal year or breaking it up if those tasks allowed. So in looking at that and talking about capital needs, Jim understand understands that we are, we have a lot, you know, financial constraint here and uh we're limited. He has that application for the Mass Works Grant in for the road work down at the Senior Center. And he should find out on that within the next three weeks. If if they don't have the grant, you know, right now he has seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars in chapter ninety. That could be, you know, utilized, some of it. So he's, he'd like to wait until he hears back on that grant and then take a look at the numbers and and see before making any type of commitment. Because he'd he'd also have to go in and change his uh road plan for all the streets that are listed. He keeps an updated list on the website. So he's gotta take a look at that, but he is going to take a look at that to see if he can defray these costs for fiscal twenty-seven. So that's where we are there.
Are are there any ramifications to telling if we cancel? Phase three, if we just don't do it? Or we already committed to it? Is there an out for us?
Well, you're in twenty-five percent, I think, right now, twenty-five percent design. So phase three is from seventy-five percent through construction. I mean, I don't think it's unheard of, it's just that you're so far along in the the process.
We complete phase one and phase two, but we don't have a million dollars to spend on it, we don't have a million dollars. Or even half a million for next year. And I don't think he's gonna wanna give up all of his chapter ninety monies for this project.
Well, you know what, I could um have a conversation with Jim and ask him, you know, what his thoughts are on it and who would we speak to to find out. But generally, you know, that's federal funding, so, you know, generally wouldn't wanna pull out.
You wouldn't, but when reality comes down to the five different things that we've heard in the last ten minutes are all five hundred thousand dollars away.
I am the bearer of such bad news, it's terrible.
Can you just clarify for me?
Sure.
Phase three is going from about northeast Pizza?
To Pierce Road.
To Pierce Road? Okay. I mean, I think that's realistic. Town people would be asking the same thing.
Yeah.
What happens if we just don't do phase three?
You have to have the answer, I get it, yep, yep. All right, moving on to uh unless you have any more questions for that, I don't know.
I don't.
The Personnel uh Work Group. We're going to have our kickoff meeting on September twenty-third, twelve-thirty. So that at that meeting, we'll identify our priorities, what we're gonna work on first, that type of thing. And uh probably delegate tasks and all of that, so that'll be good. Um and then following that meeting, I'm hoping to be able to squeak out a little more time with the financial team. I had a meeting um last week with the uh Police Chief in Hartlick. And this was to do with the Arrest Jail Diversion Program Grant. I had been asked by Chief Haglin to uh assist them um to upload the application documents into the COMBIES portal. So I agreed to to do that and navigate. I've only used COMBIES for.
Real user-friendly.
Yeah, for uh procurement, so, but I thought, you know, I can go in and navigate and I'm sure figure it out. In in looking at the application, uh realized that there were many documents. I mean, I wanna say off the top of my head, like fifteen. And um you had to make sure that everything meets their um criteria, and there's a book on that, seventy-six pages worth. And I found that um a lot of it was missing, had not been done and needs to be done in order to apply. So uh I met with the Hartlick Chief and Lieutenant um Latender and we just went through everything. Identified each area and then Kevin, you know, took on what he'd have access to, would be able to get, and then identified what I'll work on and we'll pull it together and and get that in as soon as possible. One of the stumbling blocks that I ran into was that um supplier diversity. That is a requirement when you're procuring goods and services or construction, any of that, that uh you, when you hit a hundred and fifty thousand, you are required to go through that process and you have to have a percentage that is um diverse. And so the uh provider that they were looking at using uh found out that they were not certified in the program, but clearly, clearly qualify. So what I I was able to do, Kevin gave me the owner's contact information and we were able to talk on the phone and then I shared the documents with him. And that's when discovered that they truly weren't certified. So at that point, I was able to supply the business owner with everything he would need to apply for certification. And what how I'm reading this application is that come the time of contract is when it's absolutely critical. And I think by then, he'd have, they'd have their certification, so. So there's that, I think we'll be able to use um that uh company. The thirtieth of September, um Jillian and I will be attending the Health Insurance Cost Forum that Maya is putting on. Because of the the increases, uh well, we already experienced the increases, some other towns that belong to other.
Oh, yeah.
In October, those rates are increasing. Those towns have to go back to town meeting.
Wow.
Oh, yeah. And so what we wanna do is really understand and what does that look like and be able to have conversation there. The rep is representative that we work with currently, she's gonna be there, she knows we're coming, so this gives us an opportunity to understand what we're gonna be looking at down the road.
Yeah, there there's a whole different circumstances in that other insurance situation.
Yeah.
Self-governed, paid their own claims, no rate increases for a few years. Came back to bite them.
Yeah, I guess.
When the claims rolled in.
In a big way.
Yes. Sixty-nine communities.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's awful.
On October second, I have a meeting with um Kevin Kuros. He's Central Mass Regional Director of the Massachusetts Office of Business Development. And basically, it's an introduction meeting, so he can understand uh Westbrookfield, our economic development or lack thereof, um what we're looking at, where we are financially, all of that, and anywhere that maybe his office would be able to assist us or strengthen applications, so on and so forth. So um I look forward to that meeting. And that is about.
That's a lot.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, anything that you've been thinking about that that you have for me?
I have one question, you you mentioned the library.
Yes.
Originally, that one side got a quote of like fifty-five to sixty or information about price, where did that price come from?
Contractor, um that came out. He is a contractor that specializes in historic brick. So we were really lucky to have uh that company come out and take a look, but that's where that came from.
Okay. And I think the only thing that we need to also think of is for next year's budget, I think besides just making cuts or assuming an override, selling it well is gonna do the trick, I think we need to look at other options. We need to, if there's ways that we can look at in other revenue or talking to some surrounding communities about some cost sharing of things, we need to start those conversations.
Yeah, we have to start those conversations. It would be very unlikely that MIAs would come to fruition for fiscal twenty-seven, but there's certainly shared services that we could be looking at and engaging in conversation. And some of them may be departments and those services, and so those are some pretty hard conversations to have, but uh that may be.
So is the override.
Oh, yeah. But then there's also, you know, like what Beth had demonstrated. Now, it doesn't seem like much, but to update your uh your fees for different licensing and all of that, you know, some of your licensing fees. some of your licensing fees, um, those fee schedules are old. It doesn't look like much, but when you add it up, those are your local receipts.
Yep.
Um, so there's that. There's, there's different things that we can do. We're also hoping that, you know, um, with the assistance of RRG, that maybe they'll capture more in new growth and that. Um, so there's, there's definitely some things.
And I think that's the important pieces for the taxpayers in town, as well as everybody that's here with the operations. The go to shouldn't just be, we, we need to reduce things or an override.
Or an override.
We've gotta do whatever work we can in between and maybe it's a combination thereof.
It may be. And if we find that, you know, these other rocks that we turn over, there's really nothing underneath it that's usable. At least you're able to present to the public, listen, we did A, B, we looked at A, B, C, and D, we've exhausted every avenue.
Right.
Um, if we were to go forward to present an override, I'd really recommend that within there, you're creating an account for the future. Because you don't wanna have to go back. And so like you have stabilization accounts, there, you can set up a stabilization account for supplementing your budget and, and build that bank. And maybe if we're able to, if we're able to not have to go forward with an override, let's say, if we were able to create policy or look at, okay, each year you're putting so much into this, um, stabilization. You're putting so much into capital stabilization. But you're also putting some in to the stabilization that in the future may be tapped into to supplement your operating budget. And that is, is another recommendation from the Division of Local Services. And, um, if you look at the most recent trends, you will see some towns that have had success in getting an override, they're already going back for another. Um, so I think, I think it's really essential for us to, to find a way to start building a bank. Um, so that if we had to in the future, we could tap into it.
And I think the difficult part, the override last year was it was looked at that it would be, one time we wouldn't be going back every year. However, as I kept saying right from the beginning, there needs to be a well-developed financial plan of how that money would be appropriated each year, how, how it would work to get to that number and that it wouldn't just all be all at once in the first year or when we need it, we'll take some of it. There needed to be much more development, which never came out, which I think made it very difficult for voters to see that. And the alternative is keep going back every year. Well, that gets old real quick.
Yeah, yeah. So you have to provide, I think, really good data, no matter what avenue we have to take. They have, we have to have sound data to present.
Um, and I think it's, besides the, the, the data piece, I think it has to be that we've lifted every rock.
Absolutely.
Oh, there's gonna have to be cuts.
Truly, every.
The, the, the town won't vote for it until there's cuts, until people are losing their jobs.
But I think it's also a matter of we have to truly see what other kind of avenues we can take and say, we, we've done this, we've tried that. We had no luck with this, but we've tried. Um, and until we do those pieces, just saying, oh, well, there'll be cuts or you have to increase, it's gonna be difficult.
We have some really big capital items that we're gonna be faced with.
And what's gonna be difficult is some of these are required. The water, it's, it's required. The MSBA with the windows, the phase three of the Route nine. Yes, they're important and it would save us money by having another entity pay for a large chunk of it. But when it's priority and they're all gonna probably come do all within the same year as far as needing a vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyways, anything else?
No. Nope.
Any other business?
I don't have any.
Any comments, concerns? Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be September thirtieth at six PM. Are we going to, well, we don't.
We can.
Well, we, we, well, we should at least have it on the calendar until we know for certain.
Till it can definitely get confirmation of a form.
Cause I'll, I'll be here.
I will not be.
You will not. Hopefully Brad can physically be in the boat, be here. If, if not, then we'll.
He is on the work schedule, so three to eleven.
Okay. Um, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second, I'm in favor.
Bye.
Bye, you're adjourned.